I'd like to welcome all the members and officers. I can't see anybody in the public gallery, but there may be some people watching on the webcam, so welcome to them as well. The meeting is open to the public. We have received no petitions and no questions from members of the public. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? As I understand it, there is no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from town hall staff. Assembly point is Tudor Square. I would like to ask each member of the committee to introduce themselves and the officers as well. We'll start with the members. I'm Richard Williams, Chair of this committee and Member for Slidington Ward.
councillor Aln Hooper, councillor for West Ecclesfield.
councillor Sue Alston for Fullwood Ward.
councillor Peter Prime, Shay Green, Brighton.
councillor Karen McGowan, Burley Ward.
councillor Tony Downey, Mossborough Ward.
my name is Paul Wood and I represent Woodhouse Ward and the Vice Chair of this committee.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Gleed List Alley.
Thank you. Would the officers up here please introduce themselves?
Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal and Governance.
Thank you. And could I ask when officers come up to speak if they would introduce themselves as well? Thank you. Item two, apologies for absence. I don't believe we've had any. You're all here, I can see you all, so that's good. Thank you. Exclusion of the press and public, there's no items included in that today. Item four, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to make a declaration of interest of any of the items we will be covering off today? No, thank you. We will look at the minutes of the last meeting which was held on the 6th of February. I shall go by page numbers and if you have any points, please just let me know. Page, it's actually page 11 in the agenda. Page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15, and finally page 16. So that's six pages of minutes, no comments. Thank you very much. As I said previously, there are no public questions or petitions, so item seven is the work programme.
Thank you, Chair. If I could ask members to turn to page 17 of the main agenda pack, please. That is where the work programme starts. There are a set of recommendations highlighted at the top of page 18 which would be, we will be asking the committee to agree today. On page 19, there is some training and skills and development outlined. Moving on to page 20, we've got some highlighted amendments and additions where items are new or have been moved into other meetings. And then beyond that, we do have the future work programme set out for meetings and beyond. I have mentioned in previous meetings before that we don't have concrete dates for meetings yet, but they are being worked up and will be agreed soon. So they will, they will be reflected in future work programmes as well. So I'll pass back to you, Chair, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to formal decisions. We have three items, the first of which is the bereavement fees and charges. So can I ask the officer, Ellie Fraser, to come up and present this, please?
I'm Head of Coronial and Breedment Services and I'm here today to request approval to increase bereavement fees and charges from the 1st of April 2023 to offset inflationary budget pressures. So a paper's been circulated in advance which sets out the context for the service. The full council has signed off the new budgets for next year and in order to achieve those budgets, we need to apply an increase to our fees and charges. We are proposing to apply a consistent increase of 4%, which we always round up to keep our figures simple, which once rounded up, the average is 4.4% across all our fees and charges consistently, with a few exceptions as outlined in the end of the report, Appendix Two, where we wish to adjust the fees in response to either the cost of delivery or because they don't feel that they're at quite the right level when we're looking at our costs or neighbouring authorities. Does everybody have any questions?
councillor Alston.
I've got one sort of fairly simple question and one which might take a bit longer, so I'll ask them separately. The first question is, could you explain why it is we raised these fees back in the summer and why we're now doing it again less than a year later? And when they were raised in the summer, were they backdated? I'm not even sure you can backdate them, but anyway.
So the answer as to why we uplifted in the summer and now we're doing it again in April is simply because we were late in uplifting last year. So we're new to the committee system. There was some lack of clarity around where the authority to raise fees needed to go for approval, which meant that we were late coming to committee to do so. So it should have gone up on the 1st of April, but we didn't get permission in order to implement that early enough. We also have to give 15 days' notice as a minimum to funeral directors and to publish our prices before we can increase, so we need to do that in advance of doing so. So fees were increased last year from the 1st of August. No, we can't backdate increases because people have a service and then they pay for it. We also committed to honouring the existing price for services that would already been booked in last year. This year, I'm proposing to do the same again up until the 16th of April. So if we get the permission today, we will publish those prices early on. We've got a small number of funerals that are already booked in beyond the 1st of April and we will honour the price that those have been booked in against until a cut-off of the 16th.
Okay. I'm not entirely sure that that sounds right because if we'd done it at this time last year, we were under the Cabinet system, so it should have been the Cabinet that raised the fees, not this committee?
So it was a lack of clarity around it needing to go for decision because in the previous years where the councillors had just a simple inflationary uplift, that hasn't necessarily gone anywhere for decision, but on sort of researching it, reviewing the fees and benchmarking its other services and making a few slight adjustments to individual items, it was felt that it did need to go to decision. And by the time we'd come to that conclusion, the committee system was in the process of being implemented and the advice was to come to committee.
Okay, that's fair enough. My more complicated question really is around the, one of the fees on page eight, which is around the additional fee for larger coffins, I understand. I just wonder if you could explain that more to me because it does fill me with quite a bit of concern.
So we have a, at the moment, we have one fee for internments and then we have a second fee for people who choose to have caskets or domed coffins or sort of special coffins really, where it's a choice. Through practice, when booking a funeral, we would expect the funeral director to inform us of the size of the coffin so that the grave can be dug to the appropriate size. What we are finding, and I'm not placing blame on funeral directors, but in terms of the death pathway and where information is, funerals are being booked to the largest possible coffin size automatically irrespective of the actual size. What that creates is quite a lot of additional work, both in terms of digging the grave, health and safety implications in terms of how we line and support the grave, and also the extra costs with regards to the spoil for removing the soil and disposing of it. What we'd like to do therefore is introduce a standard fee which goes up to, I can only describe it as a normal size, and then a slightly increased fee for coffins that are bigger than that. It's an extra £125 which will contribute towards the additional costs that we have. This will encourage funeral directors, doesn't need to be at the time of booking, but it can be nearer the funeral date to give us an accurate coffin measurement which will save us costs and workload.
That sounds to me like what we're actually doing is charging more for somebody who is a larger person, whether they're taller, wider or whatever, and I'm not sure I'm very comfortable with that. And I just wonder whether there isn't another way of making sure that we proactively ask and strongly encourage undertakers to give us that information rather than adding an extra fee, which obviously will have to be paid by the bereaved family, because that just doesn't seem equitable to me.
There is no easy answer to that one in that we have tried that. So we have tried to communicate, we've tried to encourage it, we've tried, because our service is responsible for the public mortuary down at the Medical Legal Centre, we've tried to make that size measurements more available to funeral directors earlier on, but it hasn't changed the approach and the response and we are still having most funerals now booked at the largest size available, which is creating quite a lot of additional work, putting our staff under increased pressure and costing us more.
Could I just add as well to that councillor Alston as well, there's also the option to have the different sized caskets as well. So the standard casket, which is on the standard price list, is significant size. There is also the option to have significantly larger caskets with domes and additional items on that casket which make, that is not necessarily related to the size of the person whose funeral it is. So it's not just about the person, it's also about the family's choice around the type and size of casket as well, not just necessarily about the size of the person. I remain uncomfortable about it, but thank you for your answer.
Yeah, so just to be clear, what you're saying is a large person then would not be necessarily charged more than a normal sized person. It's the coffin itself, how it's made or what definements it has that cause that issue. Yeah.
It's a bit of both in honesty. So actually what we're looking to introduce is a three-tiered price. So there would be the standard, which majority of people would fall into. There's this interim one that we're looking at, which is where people are either choosing to have large coffins or some people who are just significantly bigger and do need a bigger grave would be charged more. Now, they're not charged more for the grave or the lease, it is purely the internment fee that's slightly more. And then there's the third fee, which is for significant domed casket type coffins, where that is 100% purely people's choice.
councillor McGowan.
Yeah, it's just something that I raised in the summer and I just wonder if it'd been considered. And it's more about the remembrance side of things, where I went to one in Derbyshire and it was called Heritage Wood and it's not owned by the council, it was private, but I just thought, is there anything in Sheffield like it? So it's planting a tree, it's having up to three ashes, sets of ashes put in there. Each time you have to pay and it's an income stream as well, which I think, and it also links into the trees and biodiversity of it. And I just didn't know if we had anything in Sheffield, I've not heard of it. And if we haven't, can we look at it?
So we don't really have anything like that in Sheffield at the moment. We do have Wise Wood Natural Burial Ground where it's a single burials with trees planted. It is on the future committee report, we haven't got very far in terms of scoping it, we're just in the process of trying to get some resource allocated to it. But what we want to do is to develop a bereavement strategy for the city which starts to set out what the future for burial provision, for cremation provision, for memorial provision is across the whole city. And as part of that, we will also look at income generation, biodiversity and trying to achieve more from the spaces that we've got. So no, there's nothing really like that at the moment, but it's certainly on our to-do list, my wish list.
Does anybody else have any questions? Certainly.
Sorry, I've just thought of something else. Not directly related to the fees, but related to the bereavement strategy. So at some point, obviously, we're going to look at the bereavement strategy. So presumably that will come to this committee very early on so we can, the committee can decide how we're going to engage the public in that and how we're going to work through that, rather than just having it come ready, done. Because I do feel we need to do a lot more about different options, as I think councillor McGowan suggested. So I think it would be useful to have sort of an early look at that so we can work out how far and wide we want to take that strategy.
So that is absolutely the intention. I think this strategy needs quite a lot of public consultation. We've had interest from members who are not within this committee as well, particularly around different diversity in the city, different communities. So lots of things will fall out of that strategy as well, I hope. So we want to develop a new cemetery policy because the current one is outdated. Again, we need to talk about new burial provision and the setting up of new cemeteries. So it's going to become quite a big piece of work and absolutely we will come at a very early stage.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, I shall ask for a vote. We do have a recommendation and that is that we agree a general 4% increase, which has been rounded up as explained, to all bereavement services' fees and charges from the 1st of April 2023 alongside the specific changes listed within the report. Are we all agreed?
Chair, I would agree with the exception of the issue that I raised earlier about the fee size. So if we were to remove that, I would support it, but otherwise I'm going to abstain.
councillor Hooper.
Yeah, Chair, the question was raised about the delay to the increase in fees this year. Could we ensure that next year we're on time and we start again in April, so we go April to April? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Are you suggesting a motion to change that? No, just an indication. No, I was talking to councillors.
I'm happy to propose an amendment, that or motion, whichever way it has to be, that we agree it except for that one item that I raised. And if that has support, then that's great. If it doesn't, I will abstain.
Is anybody prepared to second that?
Can I just ask what the implications of not doing that would be? I just, you know, for budget-wise and everything.
So the implications for not agreeing an increase today would be quite significant because we don't have a next committee date and we have a new budget that's been set and we wouldn't be able to achieve that budget. The implications for agreeing it with the exception of that amendment would be much less significant. It would in effect continue with the position as we are now. I haven't scoped that out financially, I'm afraid to give you an actual picture, but I am confident we could still meet our income budget with that amendment.
Do we have a...
Chair, I'd support councillor Alston's amendment.
Yeah, so, sorry Chair, so just to be clear, what is the, I'm taking it as read that the original recommendation has been seconded and now we're moving to a, obviously got a second for the proposed amendments, the recommendation. Can I just get the text of that amendment, please, clear for the meeting?
So it would be to support, sorry, I don't know what the original wording was.
So it's that the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee agree a general 4% increase rounded up to all bereavement services' fees and charges from the 1st of April alongside the specific changes listed within the report.
Okay, and I would put with the exception of the additional fee for coffins 600 to 7,600 millimetres. It's not got a number, so I can't.
Okay. So for the purposes of debating the amendment, the officer, I think Chair needs to advise the implications of that change and whether or not that has any financial implications and whether, you know, for the meeting. And then we need to move to a vote obviously on the recommend, the change, and then we'll move back to the substantive vote if it takes the change on the recommendation.
I got the impression that you already answered that in that taking this amendment would still bring you in within the budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Does anybody wish to have, make any comments about this amendment before we vote on it?
Chair, could you just repeat what you've just said about the budget?
Certainly. I understand that the amendment that's put forward by councillor Alston would mean that we can still come in within the budget as it is for this year forthcoming.
councillor Williams, can I come in, please? Because we don't have in front of us today the number of, we can't give you the specific financial impact. We believe that by taking that out, we will still meet the budget target for 23, 24. What we could do is start to monitor over the next 12 months the impact. So the number of actual graves that need that size. Ellie's kind of looking at me as if to say maybe we can't do that, so I'm just going to hand her the book.
Just the problem on that is funerals are booked at a coffin size. It is very apparent to the teams when that coffin arrives that the coffin is not at the size of what it is, but we don't at the point of funeral arrival then start to measure the coffin. So if we were to do a piece of work to really truly financially understand how many coffins are booked in at a differing size, we would have to do a monitoring exercise with all funeral directors for all funerals, which I don't think is quite realistic. I do think we can meet the budget without implementing this change. I don't understand, I can't quantify the actual cost to our service in terms of the extra costs without that data, if that makes sense.
Peter, I'll oppose the amendment, Chair, and support the officer recommendation. It seems to me that our staff are having to dig much wider holes that aren't really necessary because the actual funeral directors aren't seem to be taking any interest at all on the implications of the orders they're sending us. And I think it's unfair because that extra cost is having to be carried by everybody else. And I think it's important that we stand by the officer recommendation, Chair. And I think amendment like this would simply complicate the whole issue, so I'm going to stand by the original decision, Chair.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak for or against the amendment? councillor Little.
Yes, I will support this amendment, Chair. I'm seconding this amendment, Chair, because I feel that on the case of equality in the city, I think that often it's a genetic issue that somebody has or it's a lifestyle issue that is not their choice, that they've actually, they are the size that they are. And I think it's just how people are and I think we need to recognise that they should not be disadvantaged through financially because of that.
councillor McGowan.
Sorry to muddy it even further, I just wanted to ask, am I right in thinking that if we went through with what Sue was saying, that we would put the 4% on everything else and wouldn't put the 4% on the larger? Is that what we're saying?
Sorry, if I can come in then.
The impression I'm getting is that we, that particular tier will not exist. Is that your view as well?
That's correct. So that particular tier does not exist at the moment. We're proposing to introduce an extra £125 for a new tier.
To encourage the right size to be requested at the date that the plot is booked.
So if it's not, yeah, if it's not, if that amendment is supported, we will remove that tier and we will apply 4% for all coffins up to and including the size of that extra tier, if that makes sense.
Come back, sorry. So the issue is with the funeral directors doing, is there anything we can do as a committee to make them do the right thing by the people? Because it's them that are charging the members of the public the wrong fee in effect because they're not doing the right sizing. Is that what I'm hearing?
So at the moment, there is only one fee, so they are being booked to one size unless people are choosing to have the very large domed American-style caskets. So there is one fee which doesn't give any incentive to the funeral directors to give us accurate measurements because the fee is the same and the fee to the public is the same. Yes, more work can be done with the funeral directors. I am hoping to reinstate some engagement sessions with the funeral directors to try and address this, but the steps we've taken so far have been unsuccessful.
Then I'm just thinking that we were asking for more work to be done with funeral directors and if they don't adhere to it, then it's something that'll have to come back later.
I would think that's a reasonable approach. councillor Elliot.
I just wanted to check the rationale behind adding this additional fee. Is that actually to save space because people are booking bigger than they need? No, is that nothing to do with it?
It doesn't save burial space in that the graves are allocated sizes. So by digging them smaller, you don't create extra graves. What it does is reduces, significantly reduces, the workload of the teams. As I say, the health and safety implications, the larger the grave, the more health and safety measures you need to put in place and also the amount of spoil that we remove and that has to be disposed of. So there are a lot of additional costs that at the moment are borne by the local authority.
Okay, right, I'd suggest then we go to the vote on the amendment. Are we all clear what the amendment is? Please.
So members, you're now, Chair, members are now voting on whether to change the substantive recommendation from the text in its form on the order paper or the report in front of you to the additional text of with the exception of the additional fee for coffins 600 millimetres to 7,600 millimetres, which shall not be applied.
Are we all agreed in that? No? Okay. Okay.
I need to count this.
All four?
Two, three, four.
Four. All against?
All against.
Thank you so much. That was four and four.
Yep.
I will abstain on my vote, but I use my chair's vote to vote against.
So we now move back to the substantive recommendation.
No, okay, so can I see for the substantive? Yes, please. And abstentions. So that was five, four, one against and two abstentions. So that is carried, thank you. Our next item is item nine, which is library theatre fees. Okay, this is a report on library theatre fees, but before we start, I would just like to congratulate Hillary on her appointment as Head of Libraries.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, everybody. So Hillary Paulson, Head of Libraries. So today we are coming to committee to ask for approval for the proposed increase in the higher fees for the library theatre. I'll not go through the report kind of line by line, but I'll just give you a quick summary. So the library theatre is situated in the central library with an audience capacity of around two hundred and fifty. So it provides a book hall space for community theatre groups and performing arts groups to hold events. So the fees for the theatre for our hirers were last increased in 2014. So obviously, since that time, there's been a significant increase in terms of running costs linked to inflation and staffing costs. Over the pandemic, the theatre did close for a number of years and reopened in June 2022. So at that point, we decided to open at the same hiring fees as previously recommended, the impact that the pandemic had had on the performing arts groups within the city. However, when we looked at inflation over the last eight years, it has increased by about twenty-nine per cent, and therefore the theatre is becoming unsustainable at its current higher fees. So we've included a full breakdown of the charges proposed because we do hire on a sessional basis. On an average weekly hire, what we're proposing is to see a kind of a twenty-three per cent increase, so less than the rate of inflation over that time. But obviously, that is quite a significant increase. That would take the average hire up by about two hundred and fifty pound per week. So we did a quick survey and contacted our kind of regular hirers and our upcoming hirers to try and understand what the impact would be. The responses that we got were broadly supportive, so we asked whether they wanted, that they were, I suppose, kind of happy is a difficult word when we're talking about increasing fees, but whether they were comfortable with the proposed increase, whether they would look at a lesser increase but with lesser kind of like improvements to the theatre, or a higher increase. And actually, the responses we got that people were happy with the proposal that was made. And that that would have, that would translate into a kind of a one to two pound increase on the ticket prices for customers. Our informal benchmarking shows that we would still be the lowest benchmarked kind of like theatre venue in the city centre. So, but I think what we do recognise is that we need to consider this on an annual basis rather than doing a kind of like a standstill position for a number of years and then a larger increase. So going forward, we'll review this on an annual basis. But today, we're looking for a committee to approve the proposed increase in the higher fees for the theatre. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councillor Down?
Yeah, thank you. Can you, I mean, I might have missed something here, but can you tell me why they've not, that period where they weren't increased? Can you tell me why they weren't increased then? And then perhaps wouldn't have been, it would just have been a steady increase. Can you tell me why it wasn't done then? Thank you.
Yeah, I can give you a bit of a part of history. If not, I might just refer to my colleague who's been working kind of in that area for a bit longer than I have. So in 2014, there was a significant review of the fees and charges. So a whole scale and tiering of fees and charges were brought in at that time. And it was a thirty-three per cent increase. So it was a significant increase at that point. I think in the years kind of immediately after that, it was trying to maintain them at that level to reflect it had been such a significant increase in fees. Prior to the pandemic, so in 2019, 2020, we were looking to increase fees, but obviously, that got put on hold with the pandemic. So it would have been a five-year gap. But obviously, with the pandemic, that has lengthened that to an eight-year gap.
I've got councillor Hooper and then I'll...
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Labby Theatre sits well within Suda Square and the other theatres. I think that's the first point. A huge increase, like you've commented on, one of my comments was, why not increase regular, small? The survey and the questionnaires were very poorly responded. You only got four respondents. Very poor, really, to find out what people think. And to me, there's two distinct groups that use the library theatre. One is the small community groups, amateurs, and then the touring productions, which may be professional or semi-professional. And I believe it charges the same rates across the board. Don't know if that could be looked at. My last visit to the library theatre was prior to Covid. And my impressions over periods of time then was that it was tired. The sound system was very poor. But it was just tired. And, you know, it was unattractive. Seating was hard. Decoration was poor, you know, and there's bits and bobs falling off, as you might say, as the library is at the moment. So, yeah. So I just wonder what the impact will be on small community groups or groups using it, who have got very tight budgets and it's all raised from ticket income. So, yeah, you raise the ticket prices, do you lose groups altogether? Or do you lose customers for those amateur productions? So it's a fine balancing act. So whatever increase, we'll find out over the next twelve months whether people are prepared to pay that to use the Labby Theatre. There are other small theatres throughout the city. I don't know what they charge. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, I'll come back on as many points as I can do. In terms of why not increasing it regularly, I completely agree. I think we should look at smaller kind of incremental increases. I think the current year obviously has been quite exceptional in terms of kind of inflation and staffing costs. In previous years, we have looked at the kind of the bar prices to make sure that we are kind of covering the cost of the kind of drinks that we sell through the bar. But that on its own isn't sustainable in terms of actually running the theatre itself. I think with regard to the respondents, you're right. It is a small kind of pool of people who would regularly hire the theatre and who we have kind of upcoming. So we sent it to around twenty-five, twenty-two, five people or kind of companies. So the response rate of four is kind of low. It's kind of, you know, we can play with numbers and say it's kind of about twenty per cent. But you're right, that there is a small number of actual respondents. I think what I would reassure you though is that in terms of our kind of like general kind of conversations that we have with people who are interested in hiring the theatre out, that there isn't anybody that has kind of cancelled, kind of because of the proposed increase. So we have been making people aware of that, kind of even prior to the survey going out. So we are still taking bookings. And I think partly that reflects the fact that we are the lowest price venue. We will continue to be the lowest price venue. And I think it kind of reflects we're probably kind of underpriced at the moment. So you're right, we do need to be cautious about the kind of like the formal responses. But our informal kind of conversations with people do indicate that this is kind of manageable. But obviously, there is the increase in ticket prices that we would expect to see, that people have indicated when they responded to us in the survey. In terms of the facilities, I think you're right. I think part of the survey questions that we asked was reflecting that part of the increase needed to go to kind of improvements, particularly in the technical side of things, whether that's kind of lighting, whether that is the kind of the sound. We do need to look at making sure that the theatre facilities are sustainable. So, because it's one of those where we can try and do it on a rolling programme, but some things like getting a new kind of like sound desk, for example, requires kind of like a one-off fee. So we do need to make sure that we are being sustainable in that. And I think that the increase, trying to keep it below inflation, reflects that we know that we are hiring to community groups and we don't want to kind of overcharge. But we do need to make improvements as things kind of need replacements.
Yeah, thank you, Laurie. Regarding the costing, you say that the Labby Theatre is the lowest cost for groups. Is that comparative to council venues or across the board to individual theatres throughout the city that are privately owned and rented out to groups?
So it will be across kind of other private venues, kind of sort of theatre venues, if you like, within the city centre. Obviously, we don't publish, we don't have their kind of like list of charges because they are kind of commercially sensitive to them. But kind of informal conversations show that the kind of other venues are obviously having to kind of increase to cover their running costs. So that we would still maintain the lowest price point in the city centre for theatre venues, not necessarily kind of citywide.
Councillor McGowan?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, first of all, that I've read this chart right and that where it says, for example, rehearsal rates in a morning in a weekday is ninety pound, and then it says plus twenty per cent. Is it ninety pound before the increase? Is that what we're doing before we've increased it? Or is it ninety pound with the increase on?
Yeah, I wanted to check that. It's ninety pound with the increase on. So the twenty per cent is ninety pounds.
That's all I read the first time, but I sat here then puzzling whether I got it right or wrong. And my first initial reaction was, I thought they looked really cheap, to be honest, for a city centre venue. When you look at room hour of our community centres and things like that, you can be paying twenty and thirty pound for an hour out in the local community. So paying thirty pound for a theatre, which is quite a large venue, I thought was quite reasonable. My question is, what's the percentage of bookings for the theatre? You know, have we got big gaps in bookings? Or is it booked out? I just, I'm just going to refer to my colleague, if that's all right.
Sorry, I'll just repeat for the benefit of the microphone. So our bookings tend to be seasonal. So spring and autumn would be our kind of like busiest kind of seasons, with a probably a little over summer and then a peak at Christmas again. I don't think we're seeing any changes in kind of pattern because of the proposed kind of increases. But I think as a whole, you know, we have seen changes since the pandemic. We have only been open for less than twelve months. So therefore, we are obviously kind of trying to kind of build back from that point as well.
Can I just, sorry, can I just come back to say, what are we doing to increase the bookings? I think that's what we need to see, is, you know, so that it does become that long-term sustainable venue.
Sorry, Richard. Yeah, absolutely. I think partly this is about us trying to kind of improve our facilities. So where we know that sort of some of the lighting and the sound kind of needs kind of improving so that we become kind of, you know, a desirable kind of like venue. And then a lot of it is about kind of publicity and kind of making sure that we're kind of in contact with our community groups who are our most kind of like regular hirers. But I think you're right, as we go forward, we do need to look at how we advertise and who we advertise to.
Just to add if I may, that we had an uplift of the ventilation system post-Covid.
Air cleaners rather than ventilation.
Air cleaners, which is why we didn't open immediately, that the restrictions were lifted because that air cleaner needed some additional work. And that was quite specific for the type of building. So that was one factor. And then also, we remain mindful that any decisions around the graves building and the library and the museum have to absolutely take consideration of the library theatre and its unique niche in the city centre. So, yeah, we are absolutely mindful of that.
Councillor Alston's next.
Yeah, just sort of a very simple question really, but will this increase in fees allow you to do some of the decorating type work that needs to be done to improve the facilities and the technical work that you've pointed out?
So I think the increase in fees that we're proposing is to do some probably quite tactical, kind of technological kind of upgrades around kind of like the lighting, moving to LED lights, and some kind of improvements to the sound system. I think we do need to look at the kind of fees going forward to look at the general kind of condition. So picking up kind of councillor Hooper's point about kind of like the seating and general facilities. But I think doing that all at once, knowing that it had been such a big gap since we increased the fees, actually, it kind of needed, that we did need to kind of phase that in. Yeah.
Okay. Councillor Wood?
Will the refurbishment be within the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four? And how much will be done in this period? Can we use the apprentices for decorating?
So in terms of the kind of improvements for the coming kind of financial year, obviously, some of that will depend on the kind of the level of kind of like bookings. We are just kind of building back. Obviously, we've only been open for less than twelve months. So yes, we would look to see kind of some improvements in some of the technology, like the lighting and sound. But we, the apprentice programme actually is something that, you're right, we should look at. So I'll take that away and talk to colleagues about that.
I would just add, councillor Wood, that I think calling it a refurbishment might be a little ambitious. So just to curb your expectations there of what we might be able to deliver. So, yes, certainly some upgrades to the technical and redecoration. But I wouldn't go as far as full refurbishment at this stage. I don't mean to be disappointed. But we certainly know that there's a lot, that there is a lot of work needed in the theatre.
Councillor Down?
Yeah, thank you. Is there some support out there to assist in finding other funding as well? You know, additional funding, please?
So I think in terms of kind of capital funding, I think that does need to be looked at in terms of the wider kind of like building. So yes, it is something that we are looking at with kind of other colleagues, both within the council and outside. But, yeah, we wouldn't want to do anything kind of standalone. I think it does need to be looked at within that wider context.
And is that like the Arts Council?
Okay, I'm conscious of time. If anybody, I'll take one more question if it's there. If not, we'll go to the vote. Silence reigns. Okay. The recommendation is that we approve the proposed scale of charges for the library theatre to take effect from June 2023, set out in paragraph 1.6 of the report. Are we all agreed? That has been passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Item ten is a report on the biodiversity working task and finish group. And this will be presented by Ruth Bell, I believe. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Bell, Head of Parks and Countryside. I'm here with a very brief report and attachment proposing the creation of a nature and biodiversity task and finish group from this committee. As previous colleagues have done, I'm not proposing to go through the report line by line, but just a brief summary, if that's okay. So the proposal is that the task and finish group be established in response to the council having declared a nature emergency back in June 2021. The proposed scope of the task and finish group is, it's proposed as investigating the measures that have been taken to improve biodiversity and nature recovery. And then also to set out an approach to ensure that nature recovery and the environment are considered throughout the council in decisions and policy setting going forward. I did attach terms of reference to the report. And if it's all right, I'm happy to have that as sort of like a conversation starting point, because I do realise that, for example, I propose that the task and finish group start immediately with a June finish date, which might not be feasible given where we are in the current election cycle. So the proposal is that a task and finish group be established along the lines of the terms of reference appended to the report. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Councillor Elliot?
Thank you. If I could just say a few words on this, because obviously, I've put it on the table. And thank you for your work on this and putting the work programme together. I put this on the table because I think it'll be good for the city as a whole. And I think at some point, the council were aiming to develop a comprehensive biodiversity action plan. But this committee hasn't been briefed on where we're at with it. So it would be useful to see if there's been any policy development in this area and any measurable improvements for biodiversity. And also how we are tackling the nature emergency and meeting our obligations under the Environment Act. So a task and finish group would essentially have the specific aim of pulling together the information about what's happening so far. And I think ultimately, we could look at the next steps as well. But the first action would be to document what's actually being done. I mean, I know from I mean, I know from talking to officers and going on site visits that the council are actually doing quite a bit of work in this area. And I know, you know, working on nature based solutions to flood management and establishing natural capital plan which identifies potential sites which can have better biodiversity. And simple things like naturalising the short mown grass in parks. So I know there's lots of good work being done. So the reason this work is needed is that we declared a climate emergency in twenty twenty one. And sadly, forty one percent of all UK species are in decline due to loss of nature and habitat. So as well as the real and practical issues that need dealing with, I think like flood mitigation and food security. Nature is actually something that excites and engages people in one way or another. So we should look at working with community groups who are already doing great work on nature recovery in Sheffield on this task and finish group. And just one final point, I think it's important to make the point that this council has an ecology team. We need to use their knowledge and expertise. And I mean, this is quite topical, but I know that mistakes have been made in the past and the tree inquiry report has confirmed that people with the relevant knowledge were not consulted on matters, which they should have been in the past. And in that circumstance, it led to the needless felling of healthy trees. So if we are serious about nature recovery and improving biodiversity, we need to include the ecologists in this work. And I think if we link ecology and public realm, we can make them both better. Anyway, that's my pitch. We can get some agreement in principle on this task and finish group. I know that there are difficulties in terms of logistics, bearing in mind this is the last cycle of this committee. And presumably the work will go with the committee rather than the committee members. But I hope we can come to an agreement in principle that this is work that needs to be done.
Are you happy for me to come back on that? Just to respond, I absolutely agree. I think you'll see through the terms of reference that were appended to the report that the proposal that I've put forward, that obviously it's been discussed more widely, is that we do two things. Number one is, well, three things, more than that, but three things for me to talk about here. One is that we look back at what it is that we have been doing because you're right, we don't have a nature emergency action plan. But that isn't to say that a lot hasn't been done, a lot has been done and we need to capture it and tell people about that. Number two is a look forward as to how we can develop the action plan and work across the council and across the city in making sure that nature is at the heart of what we do. And then number three is that you'll see through the proposed work programme that one of the things that we're saying is that it isn't this committee and it isn't exclusively Parks and Countryside. This is a citywide problem. It's actually not. It's a national problem, but for the purposes of this, it's a citywide problem. It's not something that we Sheffield City Council will be able to and are delivering in isolation. So we have proposed that we bring in partners from the city and the region and talk about what they're doing, how we can support them and how they can support us. Because there is an awful lot of good work going on and a lot of potential if we work perhaps without those organisational boundaries.
Absolutely, I agree. Thank you. We do need to capture the work that's been done, but also look forwards as well. And obviously the work doesn't just cover this committee, it covers housing, it covers, you know, street scene, you know, education, pretty much all of them really. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got councillor Orson and then councillor Wood.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's absolutely support doing this. I think it's the right thing to do. I'm very keen that if we're going to do it, we don't waste a lot of time. And I'm just wondering whether we can sort of have a a remit, and I don't know whose job it would be, I suspect it might be Rachel's actually, to make sure that whoever is appointed the chair of this committee in May, whatever date it is in May, the AGM, is aware that we've already agreed this workshop. And maybe you could actually get it up and running even before the next meeting of the committee. So the other thing that I'm very keen that we do at the time when we start it is that we make sure that all the other policy committees are aware that we're doing it. And we ask them, specifically ask them to contribute and the LAX as well. Because there's a lot of work being done in LAX that, you know, that members of the public have asked us. Certainly, I know in my life, a big thing that was asked of us was around biodiversity, you know, and what are we doing in terms of that within our LAX? And as Marion said, we really don't want to waste time. And there's this huge gap in April and then May. And so if there's any way we can kick it off even before the June or July meeting, I think that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor Wood.
Would suggest we wait until after May elections as the committee members may be on different commits after May to rush it now would be a mistake.
Yeah, thank you. If nobody else wishes to comment on this, councillor Little.
Yes, I understand this. The issue is that the ball is raised. There is an existing group in the city that have got hold of the strategy, open space and green space strategy for the city, which meets on a regular basis at the university. There are ninety three groups, nature groups in the city, the largest number in the whole of the country for any one city. And within those, within that organisation, there is a wealth of expertise and advice. And I'd like to work very closely with this committee, this group to work very closely with those people. Because, you know, they've got way beyond what our capacity is in knowledge. So I'd like, with that proviso, I'd like to endorse this.
That's the Green and Open Spaces Forum. The next meeting is Wednesday actually. And a number of Parks colleagues, including myself, are going to talk to them to work out how we continue to work together going forwards and how we can help each other out.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I think what we're meant to do is endorse your report. My feeling is that it should go to the next cycle of the committee, but we don't need to waste time. And I think your earlier points, councillor Orson, about informing the next chair what we've agreed today. So it will get straight onto the worksheet. So you want to do that? Yes.
Really sorry, Chair, but I have, I'm sorry, I've only just really noticed this. It says bring its work to a conclusion, blah, 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 by June twenty three. I don't think that's going to happen if we're not starting till May.
That was my point about perhaps it being a conversation starter because I proposed starting it immediately and I don't know that it'd be possible. And obviously you've said now that you'd like to start it in May, so that absolutely won't be possible.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just to pick up the point about getting in touch with the LAX and making sure they're on board. Because some of us, quite a few chairs here have already done some work on it. Also, the town and parish councils are doing work on various things as well. Thank you.
It's a point of clarification, Robert. Assuming this is now in process, it's been endorsed, it was agreed last time. It doesn't have to wait to the next formal committee meeting to get going, does it?
So the recommendation today, if it's voted for, is to approve the appointment and by the terms of reference set out in the report, which includes a number of actions to get started. And the officers responded to the question as to the timing of the response by noting, and that will be minuted, that it won't be reporting back into the June committee, given the time pressures that that is. But your approval today of the recommendation would be to get stuff moving. And those engagement points and that preparatory work can get going.
So within that recommendation, do we have to make some change to the sixteenth of June date?
I would say that as the officers noted to the to the meeting, that it won't be it won't be reporting back to June. I think that it can, as it were, underperform on that point. And it will engage with yourself, Chair, and the future chair as to the reasons why. And that, I think, will be a practical way forward, rather than trying to dive in and make a specific change to the recommendation. But you can note, of course, that, note that there will be perhaps in the recommendation, note that there will be a change to that date in consultation with the chair.
Are people generally happy with that suggestion? In that case, the recommendation is to approve the appointment of a task and finish group on the terms of reference as, at appendix A, to oversee work to respond to the nature emergency declared by Sheffield City Council on the sixteenth of June, respond by the sixteenth of June twenty twenty, oh no, that was, sorry, I must read that. Declared by the council on the sixteenth of June twenty twenty one. Is that all agreed?
Sorry.
That is unanimous, sorry.
Can I just confirm something? So are we saying that we approve the appointment of a task and finish group to commence in May with the new committee? And will some preparatory work commence and will we be setting the scope prior to that or will that start in May?
So we've just voted for. But yes, my understanding is that officers are going to get started with the work now, now that it's been approved. I don't think it's as hard and fast as saying that it has to wait until May. Clearly, there's, officers are aware that they're going to be working with the new committee and no doubt will have that in mind when they're doing their work.
Chair, being realistic, the membership has to decide it. The member's going to be very reluctant to accept things, like, you know, there's going to be a change in May. Nobody's not really good to be knowing what they're going to be doing after May, depending on the outcome of the election. But to set up a membership at this stage, I think it's a bit presumptuous and I just don't think it'll happen. But anyway, best of luck.
I don't believe that we've agreed to set up the membership. I think we've just agreed that this will go ahead and that the officers will do some preliminary work before the next committee. Is that correct?
That's right, Chair. What we can do is pull together the work that's happening across the council already and pull together some of the information on some of the things that they've raised, what the outcome of the Green Spaces Forum is, but not the membership yet.
Okay, well, that has been approved. I think we're all happy. So thank you very much. We now have a series of briefings and updates, the first of which is a briefing on the city goals.
Hi, everybody. I'm Diana Buckley. I'm the Director of Economy, Skills and Culture. The lead for Economic Development and Skills Committee usually, so it's nice to be here with you today. I'm here actually though on behalf of the City Partnership, not just Sheffield City Council. I am the lead Sheffield City Council officer on the city goals work. So I'm coming to brief you today, but this work is owned by the Sheffield City Partnership. Are you happy to change the slides for me? Thank you. So do you want to just click on? I have got several slides, but I've noted the time and the agenda. So I'm not going to go through them all in detail to give time for questions. So if we can skip this one and move on, thank you. Thanks. So I wanted to kind of start out by just talking to you about where this work has come from and why we think that we need it. Some of you might remember that we had a city strategy about ten years ago now that was led by Sheffield First Partnership at the time. And the partnership and partners around the table have recognised the importance of having that overarching economic vision and set of goals really for the city, so that partners as well as the council can stand together in terms of what we want the city to be in the future and have clarity and collective ownership around some of the priorities around the economy. And I think this is just recognising that the council can't do everything itself in terms of the complexity of some of the economic issues that we're dealing with at the moment. And some of the opportunities that we've got, that we need a collective approach. So the idea is by rebuilding a city strategy, we'd get better collaboration, a clearer set of co-ownership of a set of priorities going forward. Do you want to move on? Thanks. So the city goals would essentially give us a long term vision for the city in terms of a better place to work, live and play. It would also help us kind of identify what our responses to some of the big challenges that are facing us, like climate change and buy in our partners to some of the key things we need to do in the city. But it won't just be really high level. Our aim is to talk to communities and residents about how they want to see their neighbourhoods change, what their journey to work would look like and how it might be different and how health and wellbeing is impacting their lives at the moment. The aim of this is to try and move from what is currently in Sheffield, a higher quality, low growth economy to an equal, higher growth economy and chart the path to do that, which, you know, we can't do alone. We've got to come together with partners to understand how to take that forward. Do you want to move on? Thanks. So in terms of what might look different, previously when we had the city strategy, it was quite a thick document. And we all know sometimes strategies unfortunately get to sit on shelves. So what we're trying to do here differently is look at the city goals approach. I'll show you some examples of them, but it's spearheaded by the UN Development Goals, which you might have seen. So the idea is to set a set of goals with the city that gives city ownership of a set of priorities. I'll talk to you a little bit about the processes we're going through to get that city ownership and talking to citizens and communities and stakeholders. We also think that having these city goals and that longer term strategic plan will give us a better platform for leveraging funding with government, with investors and funding bodies. So we know when we go to government, they're always kind of saying, what's Sheffield's vision? Where are your priorities? And at the moment, different partners don't often talk with the same voice and stand behind the same thing. So having these city goals in place will really take our conversations on with government. We also think it'll help to align resource and expertise across the city and drive collaboration, as I said earlier. Do you want to move on? There's a set of principles here that the steering group who've been leading this work, which is led by partners across the City Partnership Board, have come up with. But I just want to focus for today, because we're short on time, on the co-produced and co-owned. And I suppose the point that I want to make really is that we're going to take our time with this piece of work, that we are building in engagement phases. If it really is going to be city owned, then we need to make sure that we are speaking to LAX, to communities, to citizens, as well as members, as well as key stakeholders. Do you want to move on? Just in terms of what city goals might look like, this is a kind of a snapshot from the UN Development Goals kind of page, which talks about what the seventeen goals are for the UN Development Goals at high level. And one of the things that you might notice is the language. So in terms of an economic framework, this is not something we'll be saying. One of the objectives might not be GDP increasing by five percent, which, you know, doesn't engage a lot of people. It might be more along the lines of this type of language, like no poverty. And then underneath that, you might have indicators. So this is just one example of what city goals could look like. They're not determined as yet. Do you want to move on? Just to show, this is what other places are doing as well, moving towards this kind of goal orientated way of doing things rather than thick strategies. And just to kind of talk to you a bit about the evolution of this work. So in November twenty one, City Partnership Board agreed that we needed a new inclusive economic framework to act as a city strategy. So it wasn't called city goals at that time. January, an evidence base was commissioned, which is part of the council's kind of statutory role actually. But we did an inclusive evidence base, which looked at economy, health and wellbeing and sustainability. So that went back to the City Partnership in June twenty two and it also went to the Economic Development and Skills Committee in June. And then at that point, we started talking about development of city goals. So since then, we've done a lot of briefing. We have been to committee management team, to LAC chairs, we've done newsletters. So you may have seen some of this already as members because we've been talking to you and your groups and on email about it for the last few months in the work up to its starting. So we've just been in planning phase really and the work is just about to start now in terms of some of the engagement. And then also in February, we went back to Economic Development and Skills Committee with a further update and offered all committees across the council for this opportunity to come and speak to you to engage more members. Because, you know, we need to do that in a lot of ways. That's why I'm here today. So just want to move on. So in terms of kind of opportunities for you to engage as members now to inform this going forward, now we're moving out of the the planning phase, there's a dedicated workshop on the twenty third of March for you guys to attend to inform the work and get your priorities noted within that group. There's also a drop in session, actually, which is tomorrow. It's online. You can just join that and there'll be offices there to talk to you about this process and how you can get involved. And they're also going to be doing a public survey, which will be shared imminently. Do you want to move on? So just in terms of the overarching project, this first phase that we're in is kind of our first engagement phase where we are just listening. So we haven't got a set of city goals that we are consulting on as yet. We are just listening to stakeholders, to citizens and to communities and members to kind of come up with a set of evidence that will help us come up with the up with a set of evidence that will help us come up with the goals. Then through a second phase of engagement, we will test what those goals are after we've listened, with a view to coming up to the city goals in June, July. The idea is that these will go out to consultation to you all, so you'll be involved throughout this process. And then when we got the final goals, we'll go to City Partnership Board, where all partners will be asked to endorse and adopt these goals. So that's why we're starting this process early in terms of engaging people at the beginning of the process, so that they can feel involved and kind of some co-ownership of it and throughout the process. So when it comes to kind of July and adopting these goals, they're not a surprise to anybody. So I'll leave it there for now, if that's okay, happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Just to say, I received a briefing a while back on this, which I thought was really useful. I felt it important that members should get a chance to be briefed as well. So I've got an awful lot of people wanting to speak. I think it was councillor Wood, councillor McGowan, councillor Price and then councillor Orson. Councillor Wood.
The city goals does not mention Page Hall at all. It is critical that Page Hall is included in the city goals. This particular area takes resources on a massive scale from housing, environment, policing and social care. It warrants a goal set on its own. What plans have you for the Page Hall area? It is an area that needs a vision.
Thank you, Paul. The goals aren't developed yet, so we'll be going through the process I've talked to divine them. I understand what you're saying about goals for specific areas, whether, because we can't have fifty goals, we'll probably be aiming, you know, around ten for these to stick. So it might not be that there'll be a specific goal for Page Hall unless that comes out through the consultation, but we'll be able to look at through the LACs and through communities, how those goals apply in all of our areas. And we're definitely going to be talking to people in Page Hall and in that community to make sure their views are heard. So, thank you.
Councillor Price.
What are the members of this partnership group, please, and where did they come from?
Yeah, what is it? So it's just a task and finish group that sit under the City Partnership Board.
What's the City Partnership Board? Who's on that as well?
Okay, who? Sorry. Sorry, Chair, I'm asking the same question really. What is the City Partnership Board? Who's on it? How does it fit in with the governance of the council? Because you're talking about all this work they're doing, I've never even heard of them. Okay. So the City Partnership Board is a body that's been in existence for quite a while now. So it's where the key anchor institutions and the voluntary sector meet together. I think it's bimonthly, it's chaired by David Blunkett in the, yeah. It's not a Labour Party Board. It's chaired by him as an independent chair and it brings together the universities and other bodies to come together to work on kind of citywide issues. So you might remember them, do you remember LSPs? So every city usually has a city partnership where those issues are taken to. So that's supported by our corporate policy unit, but it's kind of its own standalone partnership board. So underneath that, we've got a task and finish group that has brought together members of that board plus others to lead this work on behalf of the partnership. So our task and finish group that's leading on some of this work includes both universities, the Chamber of Commerce, green estates, somebody from the Rec Commission, VAS, Voluntary Action Sheffield and Social Enterprise Network amongst a few others. So we've tried to get representation from a diverse set of groups and to work on this together. As I said, we are still in the planning phase now, we're just about to go into delivery. The point of bringing it here at this point is so the council and members can feel some ownership and know about it, so we're not popping out in July with a set of goals that you've not seen or don't feel like you've had enough ability to influence. So the whole point of this is in this process, doing it in a much more kind of slower, more consultative and engaging way, making sure that there's opportunities throughout the next six months for you to inform and be informed by this work.
Was that your question answered? Councillor Orson and Price.
No. You were getting it.
Okay.
Can I just say, if you want to brief in on the City Partnership, we can get officers here to do that, it's not really my part to do that today, I don't think, around the city goals, but if, I'm sure colleagues in corporate policy and the partnership itself could come and talk to you about their role in the city. I work for the council, so I'm, yeah, so I'm the council's lead for this piece of work. So our Sheffield City Council is one of the anchors, we're supporting the work going forward, one of the leader anchors, so alongside the two universities and the other people that I talked about. So I sit on that task and finish group that I was telling you about and the council's lead for this, which is why I'm trying to make sure that people are briefed. We've done employee events as well, so staff feeling engaged in this process because ultimately they are all residents as well. So yeah, so I'm employed by the council and the Director of Economy, Skills and Culture. As I say, I usually support the Economic Development and Skills Committee, but I'm here talking to you about this piece of work as Sheffield's lead on this partnership-based work.
Councillor Orson.
So which individual or committee or whatever within this council is responsible for agreeing that we will support the City Partnership Board in doing this work?
So the leader sits on the City Partnership Board when the decision was taken to take this work forward. In June, a paper went to Economic Development and Skills Committee that presented the economic evidence base and talked about going to do the city goals. And then in February, we took another update to EDS to give them exactly this presentation in terms of what we're doing going forward. Ultimately, I understand the future decisions to adopt the goals will either sit with SNR or full council. Paper is going to SNR in April as well. So hopefully that's a question.
So just to follow up, so SNR will be able, so at the minute, it's not gone to any policy committee at all for a decision as opposed to a briefing, but SNR will be deciding in April about their support for it, is that right?
Yeah, so it's a briefing still in April, to be honest, with a decision to support it going forward, until the adoption of the goals. We were briefing people rather than asking for a formal decision, but there is a paper going in April, so we can ask for a formal decision to support the development of this work if we think that's needed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my head around this because it just feels as though we're basically being told, you will have these goals and you will like them, rather than, do you want to be involved in it? If you see what I mean, it feels like it's something being, coming down from on high, you know, how things happen. But we will say, how does this fit in with the corporate plan?
So the idea is that this is an overarching framework for all of the city organisations, that then the council will reflect on what priorities it wants to lead on and support in its corporate plan. So our corporate plan and the delivery plan now will still be our key documents, but I fully expect there'll be a lot of similarities and kind of goal alignment between what we're trying to do as a council and what the City Partnership and city partners want to do. So I think rather than kind of feeling like it's coming down on high, I think this is more about partners coming together on a set of collaborative things. Apologies if the way I presented it feels like a done deal to you, it absolutely isn't, that's the part of coming early, we are starting this process really. So it really is an invitation to get involved, to shape the goals. I understand what you're saying about who decided they are goals. So it is the City Partnership Board took the decision to do this framework and we as the council are helping them through that as one of the members of it. But yeah, this is very much an invitation about working collaboratively rather than you feeling that you've got to adopt things that have been kind of programmed and designed by other people. Apologies if that didn't come across in the way I presented it.
Just final comment, is it possible then to have some information, not now obviously because it's two times a year, about what the City Partnership Board is, who sits on it, who determines who sits on it and what its sort of remit is, if you like? Thank you, that'd be really useful.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll get an officer to send that round. There's also a website as well, so we can circulate that, but if you want a more detailed briefing, I'm sure my colleague will come along with the partnership itself. Thanks.
Thank you, I've got councillor Hooper and then councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we've got three LAC chairs here. Do you know when you actually came and who came to the chairs' meetings? I can't remember it and it certainly didn't reflect anything that we've seen today.
Yeah, my colleague Laura White and Jennifer have been to the LAC chairs to present in January, I think it was, but I can get the dates if that's helpful. And we have a LAC officer on the steering group for this to make sure that the LACs are drawn in and we did do a member briefing in December as well.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation. Yes, I'm aware that city partnerships have been going for something like thirty years and they're always there somehow or other in the background. I've never been quite clear at all, well, I've never been clear about who elects them, who are they accountable for and how they interact with what we do, because we've been elected to take the decisions in this city and they always seem to be there in the background with, seem to be enormously powerful and can see through beyond elections, which is, I think, is very worrying. So my question is with these goals, I mean, the big goal we've got and we cannot move from it because of the science behind it, is the zero carbon by twenty thirty. That doesn't seem to be reflected in the city goals that you've presented today. So I'm wondering, where on earth is that? You know, it is an enormously complicated and very, very challenging because it challenges our perceptions of how we've done things in the past that can no longer be going in that direction again. And my third question is about, that you raised in your presentation, about the language and when you talked about how do we move away from being a high inequality, low-growth economy? I'd like to see, you know, that that language is so high level that it is meaningless to most people. I just feel that we should be aiming for a city that's prosperous and more equal and where people aren't left behind. I think that would be far more tangible for people rather than the emphasis on growth because we've had growth for fifty years and we're desperate, we've got public services in the country that barely operate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Just to assure you, I haven't presented any of the goals today, but stood behind this is the economic evidence-based piece of work that went to committee for formal adoption in June last year. I'll circulate that piece of work and it purposely looks at economic, traditional economic measures, health and wellbeing ones, but then it also looks at sustainability and zero-carbon measures. So the aim of this piece of work is to be much broader when we're starting to talk about the economy, to look at the foundations of what a good economy means, which is often around sustainability and wellbeing as well. So it is in there, it is embedded and we fully expect it to come out very strongly through the consultation. It certainly comes out in the data and the fact work that we've been doing that are feeding in this piece of work as well. So I will circulate that piece of work to members straight away. In terms of language, I couldn't agree more and one of the things that I think the engagement will do for us as well is to give us a better language and we are the partnership group that's working on this. It is a lot of kind of community-minded kind of champions for their own kind of sectors, whether it be the voluntary sector or the social enterprise one or the chamber, and they are serious about looking at language in this too. So I totally agree with you that better words, that people can really kind of understand what we're talking about and what it means for them, is really important at the heart of this work. So as we get to where we have got some goals, that would be a really good test to kind of hold us to, I think, as this work goes forward. In terms of the City Partnership Board, I'll let, I think they should come and talk to you about their role in the city rather than me trying to defend that. However, I do think city partners are there to be collaborative and having something long-term that the city can kind of focus on in terms of an economic strategy is something that is done kind of as best practice across other cities in the UK and a further afield. So it feels like what we're doing is good practice and not that unusual really. But I understand if you guys don't know who they are and how they're adding value to this, that's a fundamental piece of the jigsaw, so we need to correct that.
Okay, thank you. Just come back. Well, we've got, I'm conscious of time, Bernard, and we've got, you've got opportunities through the drop-in sessions to ask further questions.
I guess one of the other phrases is sustainability, nobody knows what it means anymore, it's out of date.
Thank you, that was our briefing for noting, are we happy to note that? Thank you very much and thank you for coming in today. Item twelve is a youth strategy update.
Are you going to honour your friend there? No. So, hello. So I'm Chelsea Ranahan, Head of Community Youth Services and I've pretty much met everybody here, so hi. This isn't any decision taken, it's just an update on where we're at with the, with our Community Youth Services strategy that we approved last year. So this is essentially year one, it's a twenty-two to twenty-five strategy. And to update on where we've got as we go into year two, if you like. So, sorry, Rachel, are you gonna click it? Super, thank you. No, super. So some of the work, a lot of you will have been part of the conversations that we've had and the discussions that we've had either through LACs, through one-to-one drop-ins or in the briefings that we do with the committee. So you'll know that we've been going through quite a significant restructure, something that took a lot longer than we anticipated, but this is for the benefit of our young residents and this is why. So fundamentally, our restructure, what we were able to do is we were able to remove some of the vacant posts that we inherited on the insourcing of youth services in twenty-twenty. We were able to remove those posts, which were managerial posts, and create more frontline posts in all of our services, so right across the services that we run. If you're not aware, we don't just run universal youth services, we actually run targeted and specialist youth support services as well, along with information, advice and guidance services, which you may know as careers advice and guidance, and our youth voice structure for anything, for young people who aren't in children's social care, we run that as well. Sorry, come, thank you. So this is what we've achieved in our, we've got five areas of the strategy. Sheffield has shaped services, I will go through them because, forgive me, I can't remember them off the top of my head, but this is what we've achieved in year one. So we've been able to develop an annual activity plan and we have shared that with, through quarterly action plans. So you should have through the LACs received your quarterly action plans from your youth workers. And also what we've had is our young people and also our youth workers at every public LAC meeting as well. We've also had some LACs who have arranged youth LAC conferences to engage with their young residents in more dialogue, more conversation, more detailed conversation. We have allocated funding to our local area committees to make sure that our local area committees are also taking on the opportunity and influencing the decisions that are taken very, very locally for young people and for young residents in their areas, understanding what kind of provision they can offer. There's been some football sessions, there's been some increased youth club sessions, there's been some supporting other VCF organisations. And what we've also, what we've also done, which is actually quite an exciting start, we can say this week, is we committed to allocating a youth and community worker, so a qualified youth and community worker to every local area committee area. That is now underway, we now have those youth and community workers in place, bar one, the recruitment for that is taking place this week. The recruitment for that is taking place this week. So we've got three new youth and community workers who have started. They've taken part in development days to help develop next year's activity plan. And they're also looking at their own scope and in their own areas. So we, really positively, when we arrived, we were covering eleven wards of the city. We actually deliver youth work in all twenty-five wards of the city now. Say again?
Twenty-eight.
Sorry, twenty-eight. I've got twenty-five on my brain for a different reason, I'll fill you that in a second. All twenty-eight wards of the city. And we are delivering a range of work, either detached youth club or a bit of both, which is known as outreach work. So you'll start off at centre base and then you'll go out and deliver some detached to engage young people in those provisions. Alongside that, we've also received £25,000 worth of funding from UK Youth Inspire from the Olympic Legacy Fund. And we're working with our voluntary sector colleagues with groups to deliver, for our young residents to deliver social action projects. So that's coming to the city. What they're gonna do is they're gonna test their provisions in their areas and then they will pitch that nationally to a national panel with the potential of bringing a further £50,000 into the city. But that will be a youth-led pitch. It's the young people that will bring that money in. So that's what we're working on. So that's where your twenty-five is. We are very, very, very close to our target of reaching three provisions per ward. And we should be, you can see it's green, we should be on target for that to be achieved by May. Forgive me, I should be looking on the screen. We've recently commissioned our LGBT Q plus contract that went for recommission. And what we've done is we've done an extensive amount of communication with our current provider and also young people on that contract. And we have increased that contract to support the one-to-one support for younger residents who need support or need engagement or just want to engage with the community. The LGBT Q plus community and they will offer us our specialist youth work, so that has gone out as well. We've provided voluntary sector youth grants. They've all been awarded and they're a twelve-month contract. And they've gone out to the voluntary sector to deliver an increase on the work that is being delivered. So we have work being delivered by community youth services, by the local area committees and then also by our VCF partners through the voluntary sector youth grants. On top of that, we also have work that we are partnering with. So we've opened some community-based youth clubs with the Violence Reduction Unit. And we're partnering with existing provisions where we might put, rather than offer funding, we might put a member of staff in to that provision to, just to enable it running. And actually that works better than a financial contribution in some situations, which has been quite positive. In terms of, I just want to, you'll see an orange on there, which is investing in youth facilities, modern and contemporary spaces. So we are continuing with and we're moving quite rapidly with our application for the Youth Investment Fund. And the idea of that is it's a national bid and we will be investing in the opportunity to either add, redesign or potential modern methods of construction to bring in new buildings to develop our youth provisions that are available to young people. Those provisions will also be community sites. It's really important that we make clear that it's about bringing our young residents back into our community. So this isn't about having a youth club sitting idle for sixty hours a week. This is about making sure that this work is taking place to enable communities to come together but then also safeguard our universal open access youth provision as well. So this is one of our next targets. We are working very closely with, and you'll see a few examples up there, with our VCF partners and also our university partners with the Advanced Wellbeing Research Centre and also with the National Youth Agency to understand what partnership, what provision is available, what collaboration we have available to us. We've got an awful lot of provision at the moment that we're working in collaboration with our VCF partners with, which is really impressive. We're working with our football teams, with the universities, with the Violence Reduction Unit and then also with some independents as well. This is a really, really, no, next slide, sorry. This is a really exciting slide. So whilst the oranges are there, they're there because of national development. This is exciting for the city. So we've commissioned, we don't have a youth work workforce, a qualified youth work workforce in the city. That's something ourselves and the voluntary sector agree with. So what we've done is we've commissioned sixty places for thirty Level Two youth work courses and thirty Level Three youth work courses. They're gonna be tendered, they're tendered out, that tender is complete. And they are going to be delivered to applicants in the city. Any city council training will then take place separately. So these sixty places are to enable our city to become youth work qualified and to engage its young residents collectively in the communitarian manner that we're looking at when we're talking about developing community youth work. On top of that, we're also working with, so in January, the National Youth Agency launched their Level Five apprenticeship modules. Sorry, the Level Four apprenticeship modules. The Level Four is not a Level Four qualification, but they are Level Four Grade Learning Apprenticeship Modules. Now, what we're looking at doing is turning that with NYA into a CPD programme that we can then offer out, not just within ourselves but to the voluntary sector as well. To then bring what we do have, what skills we do have and bring them up to modern contemporary practice. So whether that's working with our trans young people's community, whether it's working with special educational needs and disabilities and understanding neurodiversity in a better way, whether it's working with teenage parents or further mental health, a whole range of provisions that they offer. We've also actually been asked to contribute and write a couple of modules as well. On top of that, what we're also doing within our own structure, so we talked about restructure, what we're looking at doing is we're moving our staff around based on the skill sets that are relevant to where we need them in that moment in time. So we're recognising our staff for the strengths and the skills that they've got and we're making sure that they're being applied in the right places so that young people are benefiting from the real strength and the quality of work that's taking place. And then finally, there's just a couple of additional things that have been going on in the background that don't really fit into the areas that we had. I'm sure, I hope, you've all seen the Be That Mate film. It's been all over social media, it's been all over the local authority and is a film that was done by our young residents of both genders. It's really important to point out to tackle sexual violence against women and girls. We have been able to increase quite powerfully the voice of our young people with special educational needs and disabilities. And that is contributing to the city council's Send Accelerator Plan for our progress plan for Ofsted and NHS England. And that's been recognised as a really valuable piece of work. Our Dark Knights Programme, both years, has seen a reduction in youth associated and social behaviour. We've been able, towards the end of the year, so from October, we've been able to pilot and try and understand what playwork might look like in communities. So universal playwork and how we could build and develop that more equitably in communities. And we've been testing that. Playwork as a qualification no longer exists in England. It exists in Wales and Scotland. We've been able to work with some VCF partners and bring that qualification into Sheffield. So we've trained twenty-one qualified playworkers in the last twenty weeks. And we've also been able to train two members of staff as train the trainers to bring that qualification into the city. We've, I've spoken before, so I'll run through this quickly. So food, making sure we've got food security and there is food at every session we deliver. Please, please note that that includes detached youth work. So our detached youth workers will take flasks of hot drinks and snacks out with them on detachment. If they come across young people and there's a concern around food security, that is available and that is something that we offer within the service. I've already mentioned the Inspire funding and that we've partnered with the VCF. And what I will say is that, albeit the delay that we had in our restructure, it was worthwhile. It is a very, very strong structure we've got and we are now seeing a reduction in our waiting list for one-to-one support for more vulnerable young people needing early help early help and intervention. And we're seeing a reduction in our waiting lists for the community teams. Yeah?
Thank you very much. Councillor McGowan has indicated she'd like to ask questions. Anybody else?
Thank you. First of all, thank you Chelsea for all you've done with us in our ward on antisocial behaviour that we've had with young people. You mentioned community and youth worker to be in the lack. My first question was where will they be based? Are they gonna be based with the lack team or are they based in the town hall? We keep hearing, I'm just a little bit confused about, this isn't particularly you, but about all these staffs that are coming into our like from all different sections, but I don't know where they're gonna be based. And just getting that straight in my head, it'd be great if they were all together in one building. The thing, the second thing was about the youth work qualification, which I think is absolutely excellent news. So we've just started up a new youth club and it's been run by two parent volunteers with the help of city trust. If they want to do a qualification, could they do that through you? How long does it take? Is it in the evenings if they're working, all that kind of thing? Thanks.
With regards to the youth club, I've already had that conversation. And yes, they can be trained by us, they can use the volunteer hours that they're doing as their placement hours for the youth. So to qualify as a youth worker, you have to do a placement at every level for it to be a J and C recognised qualification. That's what we've put out to commission. So yes, they can apply for those courses and they can attach them to the volunteer hours that they're doing. We can also support that with a single worker in charge into that session. So they're getting advice and guidance on how to deal with certain situations and scenarios. And it will take anywhere between three and six months, depending on personal circumstances. And then if, obviously if they wanna go on further, they can do the CPD modules or they can go on to do the Level Six degree qualification.
Sorry, can I just say councillor McGowan, the intention is that the community youth workers will be based with the local area committees so that they're co-located and they're working very closely. And they're working very closely with members, that's the main thing. Obviously, you know, on the youth work that members are doing, that they can work very closely with members as well.
So they'll be based physically, wherever that's gonna be with our lack officers. Just when we get talked about we're having somebody from highways or whatever, it's just like, you know.
I can't speak for the colleagues.
Yeah, yeah, but they use well. Using community, using community workers about going out, scoping your community, getting to know and embed within your community and building that epistemic trust. And that is, that is the priority right now, is that we are going out and we are building trust with communities. Is it gonna happen overnight? Of course it's not gonna happen overnight. You learn someone's name within three weeks. But the fact of the matter is that commitment, that priority and that effort and that skill base is now within the city in terms of the city council structure. And we want to go out and we want to work with communities, not for them or at them, but with them.
I've got councillor Hooper and then councillor Little.
Thank you Chair. Thanks Chelsea, yeah. With regard to the North Lack, have we got a named lead officer? How long has he she been in post?
Your youth and community worker has been in post for quite some time, but has recently, has only just been moved to the North, to focus on the North Lack. I think what's important to stress is that there were three equivalent to youth and community workers previous to the restructure. So they had an east-north-west approach. They've now got a much smaller geographical area to enable that personal relationship to build with their communities. So your youth and community worker is now based in the North, only the North, and will be in touch to establish those relationships. And anybody that you know who wants to work with youth workers or wants to get in the field, wants to volunteer, wants to try something out, by all means, put them forwards as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. If you could share the slides with us and certainly I'm sure the lack managers would find them very useful as well. There's, to me, there's what you will do, there's ten aims and objectives there. Quite far ranging and lots of work to do. Quite a lot in the future. I don't think, to me, a lot's been achieved at the moment, but it's sort of a wish list, could we say?
Everything that's on that slide is everything that's been achieved since I've started.
Sorry.
Everything on that, on those slides is everything that's already been achieved. Except for where we said years two and three, because it's a three-year strategy.
I wouldn't agree with that, I'm sorry. But we'll correspond with you regarding the North. Thank you. I've got councillor Little and councillor Alston.
Yeah, thank you very much Chelsea for coming to this, to our committee. I noticed, you know, you talked about universities, what role do colleges play? I'm just very aware that many of the young people in my community that sort of are in the gig economy as it were, are struggling day to day, you know, where they're gonna, are they gonna be in a job next week as it were? I'm just wondering, and many of those people aren't what we would call academic, but they've got other skills, like hand skills, they've got the ability to problem solve. And those sorts of things used to be the the sort of home for those people used to be technical colleges. They would teach people woodwork, electronics, so they could actually problem solve repairing things, for example. We know we're moving in that direction anyway with our green economy. So what, you know, can you assure me that the colleges aren't being left out and that those young people have got a sort of place to go back and say, you know, I need some support here? Is that, I've got an idea, I want to develop it. Can you, you know, give them that support?
So colleges aren't being left out of our partnerships and other schools. We work very closely through our community youth teams with schools. But what we also have is an information, advice and guidance service. That's still going through a brand process at the moment of what young people and we're working with young people about what they want that service to be called. But fundamentally, the colleagues in that service are there to support young people exactly in that situation who aren't too sure, who might be risk of becoming not in education-trained employment or who might already not be in education-trained employment themselves. And what we do is we sit down with them and we look at exactly all of that. We look at their qualifications, we look at their soft skills, we look at their interests. And we actually work with them and have them lead what they feel the right package for them would be. Alongside that, within the restructure that we developed, we've created a role called an Opportunities Development Officer. Their role is to go out through businesses in the city and to work with businesses and to proactively enable and encourage different opportunities for young residents in the city. And also to enable and encourage an understanding of some of the needs of young residents in the city. So I mentioned earlier neurodiversity being one of them. So it's an opportunity for them to establish new opportunities, work experience, taste the days, bring businesses to the youth clubs or the youth provisions. So that role has now been appointed to and starts next week, I think.
You just repeat, is it Opportunities Development Officers? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Final question from councillor Alston.
Thank you, yeah. Because you just told my colleague that all those items on the chart were achieved. And I noticed under the green on your rag rating, it had three sessions per ward. Have I misunderstood that? Because there aren't any at all in my ward, so I'm so it's three per lack.
There's three sessions per ward, I'm asking your areas are South West, right?
So it's forward and there aren't any?
Forward, okay. So yeah, there are sessions in your wards. There's not three, which is why it's green, not blue. But there are, there are sessions in your ward and we're also in conversations with local providers. We're just waiting on confirmation or start dates and there will be three sessions by May. We're just waiting on confirmation or start dates and there will be three sessions by May, which is what I'd said.
Okay, so I'm aware of one of the local community groups, so we have to turn one of them off. And I'm aware of one of the local community groups currently being talked to through the lack to try and, um, have sessions there. So if you're saying there are already some, why don't we know about them and where are they? Because whenever we've asked, we've been told there aren't any.
So there's detached, there's a detached team that, that circles that area?
This isn't universal provision, this is for specific, eight targeted provision, is it?
No, 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 universal, detached, detached youth workers, universal youth work provision. It's going out and starting where young people are at and finding out what it is they exactly want. And then building around that feedback. So we've currently got a detached team going out in that space and they're working with young people that they come across. Um, and then they're building on the feedback that they get.
So at the minute, there's two sessions a week of youth workers going out in our ward, finding young people and talking to them?
The feedback I gave in my presentation was that the rag rating is green because we are on target to achieve the three, and it says it written in, we are on target to achieve the three sessions per ward by May. So that doesn't mean to say that there are three sessions per ward at this moment in time. It means to say that by May, we will have three sessions per ward. And at the moment, we are on a very good run for that, including your area, which includes a single session currently of detached and conversations further about a potential youth club.
Thank you. I wasn't even aware that there was even the one session, so it's useful to know, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, we have to move on. Thank you for coming in, very comprehensive. Um, thank you for what you're doing. Item thirteen is another briefing from Community Services.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Lorraine Wood and I am Head of Communities. And I've come to the committee today just to update you on how we work with and support vulnerable adults in the city. Um, I'm going to, there are quite a few slides, so I'm going to skip through them all as it's an update. You'll get a copy of the slides and I can, um, feed questions later, okay? Can we start at slide three, please? So our vision for working with individ- uh, people, vulnerable people across Sheffield is that we place the individual at the centre of their care and support, ensuring that their voice is heard and help them shape their outcomes that they want to achieve. So we're really keen that the individual receives the right care at the right time. So it's the right care and support at the right time. So the aims of this team around the person approach, so we have community service workers that work by, um, putting the person at the centre of, of their plan. So the team around the person approach is to ensure individuals are placed at the centre of their care, deliver better health and social care outcomes for individuals, delay and reduce the need for care and support where we can, deliver services that meet the needs of the individual quicker and closer to home, improve the experience of care for individuals and their carers, improve joint working and coordination of multi-agency provision and, and reduce health and social care costs where we can. So, slide four, please. So this is about a referral and who can make referrals to TAP. So practitioners, any practitioner, and it doesn't matter whether you're a policeman, a fire officer, a housing officer, a librarian, you can make a referral to TAP if you become across a person, a vulnerable person, you consider, and where you think there are more than two agencies already involved with that person. So we, we take the referrals in and we look at them and we triage them and look at the complexities. And then we bring all the right experts into the room to support that individual. I'm not going to go through all the detail on these slides. And I do have some key stats in the pack, which you can then have a look at at your leisure. Can we go to slide ten, please? So just to give you an idea of the demographics and the referrals that we've had. You know, referrals have shown slightly more males, fifty-one percent than females referred for team around the person. Um, so that difference is negligible, really. Most referrals have been for white British individuals, sixty-seven percent. Black, Asian and minority ethnic individuals make up ten percent of the referrals. But please note that twenty percent of the referrals do not have the ethnicity data that we've been asking for from the referrers. So we need to, uh, we're trying to promote that, they capture that, so that we know who we're supporting, how we're supporting them. So with regards to the age of individuals that are referred, fifty-nine percent of referrals are individuals of working age, between thirty-one and sixty-four, and nearly a third of individuals are over sixty-five, so thirty-six percent of individuals. Currently, at the moment, we're showing that, uh, we, we can save, uh, cost savings, an average of six thousand pound per person. And cost avoidance is about thirty thousand pound per person. But this is purely because we're joining things up and it's across the whole of the system. So this is not just council savings, there are health savings, there are police savings, so the housing association savings. So you've got to bear in mind that these savings come across the system. So what I'm going to do is just talk you through a case study, um, that we've had. So that's slide fourteen, please. Thank you. So the overview of the individual was with mobility issues, uh, not successfully managing their diabetes and presents with hoarding behaviours. We do have a lot of hoarding across the city. Uh, and I'm working with our health colleagues to look at a strategy for hoarding because it's increasing and it's significantly increased since Covid as well. So this person was not attending their GP appointments or checkups regarding their diabetes and were at risk of losing their foot. District nurses are visiting regularly to administer insulin by injection and concerned by the state of the property. The person has a Sheffield City Council arranged support package for cleaning, shopping and personal care, but this does not appear to be working well. Oops, sorry. Um, the property is an extreme fire risk. Planned surgical procedure delayed due to the state of the property and management of self-care. So the team around the person, their aims and objectives, and what the individual said themselves was, they need care and support, um, so that they are fully able to engage. They want to build positive relationships with those providing the support. Physically and emotional support around hoarding behaviours. We want the property to be safe and from fire risk. We want to maximise their income and manage their finances. We want to support, uh, to maintain any interventions to avoid property decline. We want the person engaged with health services and managing their diabetes. We want the planned surgery to happen. So we want the property to be clean, safe, so that we get the person discharged from hospital as quickly as possible. And then we want to future-proof the person long-term against loneliness and isolation. So those were the aims and objectives and the person was at the meeting and agreed to all of those. So as you'll see from the diagram, next slide, please, sorry. Um, you'll see all the people that were involved. So you had your South Yorkshire Fire Service, we had the GP Surgery, we had the district nurses, we had specialist nurses, we had adult social care, we had the community support worker that was working with the individual. We had the care agency support provider and we had our housing teams there. So there was one individual, thirteen professionals, seven services and agencies. So that's quite a lot of people. And what we're finding, people do say is they don't know who's working with them. They don't understand if it's actually providing them support. So these meetings become invaluable. So the successful outcomes that happened, we got funding for a tumble dryer. We employed a private cleaner to, uh, clean the house, top to bottom. We explored local activities groups and volunteering. We empowered the person to engage with a diabetes nurse, support to prepare for surgery. The property obviously was clean and safe for discharge from hospital because the biggest thing, so you will all have heard about hospital discharge issues that we have, it's all over the press, um, is getting people home. And, um, the hospitals do not want to send them home to dirty properties that aren't clean and safe for people. So, um, physical and emotional support around hoarding was given. And, uh, uh, South Yorkshire Fire Service have been in to support with interventions and do the safety, uh, fire risk as well. And we gave them support to claim correct benefits and manage their finances. So the personal outcomes that the individual has fed back to us, that they felt their life was transformed, their property was clean and safe, it was an environment they could take pride in and a space they wanted to be in. Um, they agreed to and began to use the safety measures that the fire service recommended and put in place. And through better relationships with the care provider, became more accepting of personal care and allowing cleaning calls to take place. So the person was able to have the surgery that was planned, losing only a portion of their foot, rather than the whole foot. But due, um, due to the work of the people, those professionals and experts that were involved, they were able to return home quickly with support. So that, to a property that they were far better able to navigate and recover in. So we put adjustments in place as well. So they began going out much more, just looked to the shops initially, but they felt empowered to consider other social activities and are now looking for volunteering opportunities at a lunch club to support older people. So I think that's, you know, this is how it works and this is why we want to support people and put them at the centre of everything we do. And I think finally, um, the GP that was involved in, in this case, um, talked about the team around the person team in Sheffield as being an essential part of supporting patients, helping them be involved in their care, improving health, managing risk and supporting professionals. Because the other key thing from this way of working, this approach, is that professionals feel supported because they have that peer-to-peer network to help, to run things by. There's more detail of that in the slides that you'll be provided. The other good thing, uh, that I'd like to tell you about is that actually, we're now on a national stage. Sheffield is on that national stage. And next week, we're running an event with a hundred and forty, um, directors from other local authorities and integrated care boards to talk about this approach to working. Because they really like the way that we are working with people, putting them at the centre. They also like the workforce development that comes from the peer-to-peer networks and the other guidance, uh, we put in place for our workers, like our safe system of work so that everybody checks in on each other, they have a WhatsApp, so if they go on a visit, how we debrief after a visit. Because some of these visits are very emotional. Uh, and if you don't feel that you're making a difference with people, it has an impact on you as a practitioner. Um, so I think we've also, we, I know, we have funding for next year, for twenty-three, twenty-four. And my priority next year is to get recurrent funding for this service and drive this approach throughout. Any question?
Thank you very much. Um, I've got a number of people wishing to speak. I'll start with councillor Downing.
There, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Lorraine. Uh, it's good to see you again. Um, yeah, it's great. I think it's a fantastic thing that you're doing here. Uh, and referrals, yeah, but how do we get to the, the people that aren't coming forward or people aren't being referred through whatever means? Um, how do we get to those people? Because I'm sure there are people out there that could do with that, what you've been talking about, that don't even know it exists.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, there will be people that don't know this service exists, but those vulnerable people will be accessing some form of intervention, whether it's even in their local communities, uh, with community organisations. So what we've done is we've ensured, we've worked with every single party you can think of, Yorkshire Ambulance Service, all our voluntary sector colleagues that work with people, they know about this service and can make referrals. We've done big presentations to the fire service, we've, uh, worked with the police. Uh, the police are one of our biggest referrers, actually. Um, so we work very closely with partners to get that message out there. There will always be people that miss through the gap, but the more we get the message out there and yourselves, um, to this, I mean, we can come to each local area committee and tell you about this. It is a small resource, you know, with the community support workers and the team around the person, you're only talking thirty-six full-time equivalents across the city. But we're doing some great work with that and I will be trying to grow that resource as well. That's another priority I've got as well.
And amongst those people that refer, are, are social prescribers included in that, as well to get them to?
Yes, so the social prescribers, which is, uh, quite a lot, are through our voluntary sector colleagues. As you know, social prescribing, a lot of GPs have their own social prescribing link workers. So our GP networks work very closely with us. Um, so they're fully aware of this, uh, process and refer patients in. Um, about forty a day at the moment.
I've got councillors McGowan, Hooper and then Little, and then because of time, I'll close it after that.
Yeah, thank you. It sounds brilliant. Um, did you say that two, they have to be receiving two services to be able to be referred? Did I pick that up right? So what happens to those that are only receiving one service? And if this is about some of it's about prevention, then how do we stop them getting to needing two? And then the other one, I'm, I'm trying to balance in my head, thirteen members of staff working on one person against you saying that there was savings, because that, that felt like a lot of staff, a lot of money, a lot of. And, and I'm just trying to say, I don't know what that meant as in, is it just a one-off meeting that then everybody went away, did the bit and then it had a result? Or is it lots of meetings? I don't know, then thirteen people, what effort they had to put in. So I'm just trying to balance that number against the outcome.
Yeah. Um, so the people that aren't worked with by two agencies and one agencies, we give support to that agency that's already working to them and suggestions to help, um, them support the individual, uh, more effectively, really. So, yeah, it's just, we don't have the resource, if we had the resource. But there are other preventative, um, interventions that are out there, uh, that we link them into. So we connect it all, uh, for them, so that they receive the help and the support they need. Um, it's just when the complex, usually when there's two agencies involved, the complexity's, uh, worse, really. Um, what, you're right, it's when you talk about thirteen people in a room. So we use a team around the person meeting, uh, when the community support worker has sort of pulled the plan together with the individual and then, uh, partners aren't working as effectively together as they could do. So the savings come from right intervention at right time. So you may have, in fact, we did have a meeting with twenty-six professionals in the room that were working with one person. So you may, when you're looking at right intervention, right time, it's, it's not a case of sending a person to the, um, intervention that has the least waiting time for a, for an activity or whatever. So you can stop those twenty-six, part of those twenty-six. And actually, we only needed eight key professionals initially. And then you're building the timeline with the action plan with the individual. And that's where you make your servings, because you're not there just for the meeting sake. But you need to understand that they've all got to put the person at the centre and listen to what matters to the person so that they then stop what they're doing at that moment in time and then they come on later in line. And that's where your servings start to happen. And you duplicate resources and everybody knows what's happening, including the person that's getting the support and care.
Thank you. Councillor Hooper?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thanks for that, Lorraine. Excellent, yeah. Um, going back to the casework there, if the intervention hadn't happened, that person would have probably amputations and perhaps death. You know, that's how close I believe that that person was. Um, the professionals meet, uh, for a regional meeting to look at how we can develop and solve the problems, more than one problem. Who then drives it forward? Is it the council or does it drive itself forward? Is it the council or does it drive itself forward or things don't seem to do that? So who takes charge?
We take charge because it is a partnership. It is a partnership, this team around the person, because it is pure collaboration and we need to cooperate with our partners. But because we employ the, through joint funding, I hasten to add, the team around the person coordinators, they drive those meetings forward. Also, the community support workers work in that key worker word and they drive things forward as well with the individuals and with the professionals that are working with that person. So we drive it forward as a council.
Thank you. Councillor Little.
Just a comment, really. It sounds very much like working from the occupational therapy structure of the way they deliver patient care and enablement. I do recommend this, you know, approach. It worked, I was an occupational therapist and I think it's a fantastic way of working. I think they're sadly underused in this city, in this society. I think they've got a lot more skills that they can help with and I think it's a really good model to look at. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm glad the city council is following this approach.
Thank you, Councillor Little.
Thank you, councillor. And thank you very much for coming in and giving us a very uplifting briefing session. Thank you very much. Our final item is item fourteen, a libraries and archive update. Now, at this point, I'm aware of the clock and I'm going to ask your permission to have the option to extend for thirty more minutes just to give Hillary a fair crack at the whip. I'm pretty sure we might need all thirty minutes, but I would hate to guarantee this at four-thirty. Is that okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Afternoon, everyone. So as part, sorry, as part of the kind of updates to committee, what we wanted to do was come back with a bit of an interim update. As part of the budget proposals for the service, the committee and then the council kind of agreed, as part of our budget savings for next year, we would look to standardise our library opening times. And as part of that, we were embarking on a kind of public consultation exercise, both with our existing customers and hopefully trying to reach people who potentially don't use the service at the moment. So that consultation ran from kind of the middle of January towards the end of February and conscious that obviously this is the last committee kind of meeting of the year. So therefore, we wanted to come back with an update. At the time of writing, the results were fairly kind of new in, so it is a summary that we've given and I'll run through it, but I've got my laptop here in case you ask me any more detailed questions, but I might try and kind of like refer and answer what I can do for you. Okay. So overall, the plan is by standardising and opening our kind of library, so this is about the community hub library, so central library opening times remain unchanged at forty-five hours and the volunteer on libraries are also unchanged by the proposal. But looking to standardise our community hub libraries, the council libraries, is trying to make sure essentially that we are open when we say that we're going to be open and that we're not, or kind of less affected by unplanned closures, often at short notice. So we were looking to have a single kind of standard mid-week day that we are closed and the proposal we went out was on a Thursday and that our other days that we would be open from ten till five and that our Saturday opening times would remain unchanged because they are our busiest day of the week across our estate. And that overall by doing that, we would be looking to actually increase the times that we're open from thirty-one to thirty-four hours, so having nearly another half day kind of added on to the library opening times. At the moment, our community hub libraries have quite a mixed kind of model, so they are open on different days across the week with a half day and a late opening till half past six. And what we found through the feedback to the consultation is that actually the proposals to standardise them were broadly welcomed to make things simpler for customers so they know when our service is going to be open and that they found that the current kind of mix of opening times is quite confusing. In terms of the headline, we had about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred respondents to the survey, ninety-five per cent of whom kind of use the library services at the moment. So we reached about five per cent of people that don't, but the majority that do. And about two-thirds of the people that replied to us said that actually it wouldn't impact how they use the service or that they would use the service more, again reflecting that we are looking to open for kind of more hours across the week. What we do want to do, though, is look at the kind of the sixteen, seventeen per cent of people who said that the proposals would mean that they lose the library services less. So what we did was started to look at what mitigations we could put in place. So the people who were reporting that they would use the library services less were either people who will be affected by the closure being on a Thursday and the majority of those are people who might have clubs or activities in the libraries on a Thursday currently or people who currently use the late night opening in our community library, so between five until half past six. So as part of the mitigations that we were looking for, what we wanted to do was understand how people kind of currently use our libraries. So although the, about eleven per cent of people when they responded to us said that the changes to the late night opening would mean that they use the library less, at least half of those also use central library at the moment. So the central library kind of opening times are unchanged and would retain their, kind of its own till eight o'clock on a Wednesday. So hopefully that starts to mitigate against some of those changes. And for people who were going to be negatively impacted by opening on a Thursday, what we'd look to do is either offer those groups an alternate day to use the libraries, so rather than coming on a Thursday, they could come on kind of like a Wednesday or Tuesday, or alternatively, if they are a regular group, we can work with them so that they become key holders, so that they can actually use the library when it's closed. So we have community groups that do that quite regularly across our estate and by working with them so that they can, if that is the right day for them, actually they can use the library, it wouldn't be open at that time, but it would be available for them to use. So those were the kind of the main mitigations that we were looking to put in place. We also considered kind of obviously not making any changes at all, but I think what we have reflected on is at the moment, because our staffing levels are spread across kind of six days, what that does is when we have kind of late notice kind of absence or things change at last minute, it really does impact on our ability to kind of staff more flexibly across the estate. So i.e. if we've got somebody that's off on a kind of like a full day on a Thursday, but somebody else is working a part day, actually, we find that it's very difficult to cover our opening times because they're different on different days. So really, the proposal is trying to make sure that we are open when we are, when we say that we're going to be, but obviously we did want to bring it back for yourselves as just kind of an early look at what our feedback was saying.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I'll take councillor Olson first, then councillor Hooper.
Yeah, just very quickly, obviously, as we know from going on our little trips around the libraries, which are quite interesting, you've obviously got clear records of the number of books that are taken out, et cetera. I just wondered whether, can you just clarify, this is meant to be starting in April or have we got a start date for this change?
The proposal was originally from April as part of the budget savings for next year.
So I just wondered, before we start looking at the budget next year, can we before that look at what changes there's been in the amount of usage of the library and have a report back so that we can see what the impact has been? Because if it's been no real impact, that's brilliant. If it's had a significantly bad impact, we might need to look at changes back in the opposite direction next time. I just think it's worth doing that.
Absolutely. So as part of the proposal, we looked at both kind of footfall to people that have come into the libraries that might not actually borrow a book and also people that kind of like borrow books and we tried to kind of look at when it was kind of most used and when demand was highest, but absolutely, we should be able to track that kind of pre-April and post-April and look at the changes per library as well as across the estate. Yeah.
Councillor Hooper.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Laurie. Yeah, at our January light meeting, we had library presence, so there was opportunity to consult. I didn't quite catch your answer to, Sue, the next stage of the process for implementation and when will that be?
So the proposal was that we would implement from April, from the first of April. As I say, we are still kind of looking through the kind of the detail of the responses, but we did want to kind of come and give you an update on what that summary level looked like.
A first. Thank you very much. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see. I think councillor Olson's made a very good point. We have to review these things, but hopefully it'll work well. Thank you.
Chair, please, could I just come in and just add, I don't want to extend it because we've done really well, but what I would say as well is that in addition to looking at how this goes over the next twelve months, even before then, and looking at, you know, user numbers and how we use the libraries differently, we'll need to talk to members and to communities and to the DCMS, the superintendent of libraries, to say, are we still giving a comprehensive and efficient service? Are we still carrying out our statutory duties? And now Hillary's in post permanently, that is going to be a big part of her role going forward is to really tell us what we need to know about libraries as a local authority and is there any better ways of doing it differently as well? So yeah, absolutely, more information to come back and talk to you about in the coming twelve months.
Thank you. Well, we got through it. That was a very comprehensive agenda which we got through and I knew, I knew when I said it, we wouldn't need the extra half hour. It always works. This is our last meeting of the cycle. I would just like to say thank you very much to all the members. I think we've achieved a lot. And I think this is the first committee meeting where the budget word wasn't really mentioned at all, which is nice. I'd like to thank the officers, I'd ask Dawn Shaw and Lisa Firth to please extend this thanks down your teams, please. Obviously, thank you to members and thank you to Mary Anne Elliott as group spokesperson and to Paul Wood as my deputy for the support you've given me. I'm going to conclude the meeting, but I would ask members to stay on, please. Thank you.